Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Marissa Marcelle and it is my true pleasure today to welcome you again to this wonderful celebration of a very remarkable man, Mr David John Williams. He comes from a longstanding legacy of strong character, service to the community and undaunted leadership. He is a new president of the Trinidad and Tobago Football Association. I thank you all for journeying to this corner of the country to be a part of this celebration. And to begin our tribute this afternoon, I give you over to the visionary for this event and much more, his worship, the mayor of Point Fortin, Alderman Clyde Paul.
Good evening to one and all, Member of Parliament for Point Fortin, Minister of National Security, Retired Major General Edmund Dillon, His colleague, Minister of Energy, Mr Nicole Olivier, MP Emeritus of Labrie, Hedridge Barrow. My colleagues in Point Fortin Borough Council, Deputy Mayor, a few other couple others here, The Atlantic Crew, you're here? Petrotrain Crew, I think some of them are here. And we have some very special people here. But we save the best for last. I am especially delighted to welcome here today the patriarch of the John Williams family. He deserves a standing ovation. And while I'm at the middle a little more on the patriarch, do you all know that he was a former chairman of the St Patrick County Council, of which Point Fortin was an entity at that time? Do you all know that many of the recreation facilities that you enjoy today began under his watch as chairman of the St Patrick County Council? I want to suggest this by chance, that his son, whom we celebrate today, is now the president of the Trinidad and Tobago Football Association. And of course, David John Williams and family, the press, thank you for coming all this way. If I've missed anybody, sorry. But that's the list of the protocol. Thank you all for coming. We are here to celebrate the victory of David John Williams as president of the Trinidad and Tobago Football Association. And we will do this in true Point Fortin style. So I shall be brief and the celebrations will begin because I think my colleagues will speak after me, will take a cue. But as in everything else, as mayor of Point Fortin, I do have to say a few things, you know, try and be as philosophical as I can be in these times. And so I begin, but in the coming days, there will be new beginnings and transformation. All these things will be done and will be on the minds and tongues of many as we ring in 2016. Many of us will set our goals and high steams for the new year. However, in these times, and we were reminded last night, there are a lot of things that are beyond our control. But what we do have control over is how we react. Football in Trinidad and Tobago is at a time of challenge and controversy. It is experiencing tough times. And therefore, it requires a leadership to react with determination and dedication in great measure. Martin Luther King asserted once that the ultimate measure of a man is not where he sits in moments of comfort, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy. David John Williams is such a man. I go further. Nelson Mandela noted in his time, I quote him, "A good head and a good heart are always a formidable combination." David John Williams possesses a good head and a good heart. The right man for the job as president of the Trinidad and Tobago Football Association. And so this evening, in the spirit of this Christmas season, the leadership of the Point Fortin Borough is expressing its joy at David's election to the presidency of TTFF. And we are extremely happy to have all of you here to celebrate us. And indeed, we include the South West region. Yes, people, the South West. The geography has made us neighbours and economics will make us partners. And now, we are allies. As we lobby, listen carefully, press, to make the abandoned Forest Reserve football ground, better known as the AECO, the National Football Training Centre. A place where all of our national teams, of all the regions, can focus on their task ahead. Mr President, this facility is wasting away. It is owned by Petrotrain and it's not by chance that the line minister of Petrotrain is here. It is ideal for the purpose, I've stated. And I see it as a revival of football in the South West. Most of you who are here and who have had the experience know what it is like in the days of SFL. Can't you return to those days? It is a must because I recall in the old SFL days, there were eight or nine players of SFL on our national team. And more than that, there were about seven starters on that team. And I want to submit to you all here tonight that this is the beginning of a return to those days. As I promised, seven percent cut or not, you're going to make the cut. So as I promised you, I won't be long. And we'll have some more time to socialise and celebrate and put the ideas together. But if I do that, there's the matter of the Mahika Oval Pavilion. Dear to my heart, please, all of you who are here, all of you who have some kind of influence, don't let me leave the office of mayor and not sit down at that Mahika Pavilion and watch a game. Please, I beg of you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, your worship, for those very, very witty words. I don't know if you know it, but I know it and I'll share it with you. But his worship, the mayor, was a member of a football club a long time ago. That club is from Cedras. Today, they have reunions, you know, to remember those old days. And strangely enough, he belonged to a club called, originally called Rebels. And somehow, that club reincarnated into a club called Saints. So you know, it may just be an image of, you know, greater things to come in Point Fortin. I was asked to let Mr Christopher Grantley know that his lights are on, so we may need to attend to that. Well, let's keep the energy flowing. And I'd really like to now invite, who else but the Member of Parliament for Labrie, Minister of Energy and Energy Industries, Ms Nicole Olivier, to say a few words to us.
Thank you. Mayor of Point Fortin, Alderman Clyde Paul, my cabinet colleague, Minister of National Security, Retired Major General Edmund Dillon, our very special guests this evening, Mr David John Williams and your family, particularly Ms Phil John Williams, Members of the Point Fortin Borough Corporation, oh, how could I forget our distinguished MP for Labrie Emeritus, Mr Hedridge Barrow. Many distinguished guests present here today, representative from the companies in the district. I recognise Atlantic and Petrotrain. Forgive me if I don't recognise any other representatives. Friends of football, media. Pleasant good evening. I am especially very pleased to be here this evening as we recognise the achievement of David John Williams in becoming the president of the Trinidad and Tobago Football Association. I first met Mr Williams a couple months ago during the election campaign at a function at their home in Point Coo Coo, where I also met his father. I was just a candidate going up for election at the time when he was a supporter of the party. It's good that we, our second meeting is in totally different circumstances. But at that very first meeting, we had a very lengthy discussion where he engaged me in, well, he very much shared his ideas for where he thinks sports in Trinidad and Tobago should be projected. He views sports as a business, but he certainly believes that we can develop the professional athletes if we view the industry with a business perspective. I remember him sharing ideas that if the government would give the grounds, all the playing fields of football grounds, if they would give ownership of it to the clubs that use those facilities, then those clubs would be able to earn a revenue for themselves and that way be able to help develop and sustain the players when they're no longer able to function as professionals. They will at least get a revenue, they could come back as coaches, they could come back as management staff. So he really sees the future of sports development in the country from a different perspective, really looking at something more sustainable. And I was really pleased that the ideas that he was bringing out for me. So I said, well, certainly if I end up in government and I am the Minister of Sports, I'll name you my advisor. Unfortunately, the Minister of Sports couldn't make it here this evening. He wasn't feeling well. So, well, I told him I would stand in for him. But I didn't just come to represent him. I mean, I came because it's part of the South West Peninsula. I mean, sports has always been very important to this particular area. And for me personally, football has played some part in my life. Now, none of you would know this and the loudest, well, Alderman Paul spoke about his Southern Football League. The Southern Football League has in fact impacted my life. You're thinking I'm too young to know about it. But actually, my father was the secretary of the SFL back in the days when South was certainly more powerful than the North. And I recall him telling stories about the Prime Minister, Dr Eric Williams, being very upset when South played a game in Skinner Park against the North and beat them by a margin of several goals. I can't remember what the actual number was. So football has always been something that has had its rooting and grounding in the South. And it's no wonder that finally we have a president of the TTFF who has football in his blood because he is from the Southland. So I feel very comfortable that Trinidad and Tobago football is in safe hands. David John Williams is the right man at the right time to take football in this country to the next level where we need it to be. The other Minister of Energy and Energy Industries, having been put on the spot by Alderman Paul. Now, I can tell you that traditionally in this, well, in the South West Peninsula, that Point Fortin, Labrie, Palos, Ecovelo, drone was a bad area. The energy companies operating in these areas have always contributed to sporting facilities and to the promotion of sports. Palos Ecovelo drone was developed by Tesoro. And I know that, well, Forest Reserve, that was all part of the oil field as well. So despite the difficult economic times that a country is faced in and the difficulties faced by the companies in the energy sector, I will certainly ensure that under my tenure, what little they have to contribute towards community development and corporate social responsibility, that some effort will be placed in sports. Because sports really does play a very important life, a very important role in the lives of our youth. This is why you tend to find Ministry of Sport and Youth affairs being married together because it's all part of the holistic education system. Football has, I do have a great deal of love and interest in football. And I certainly recall November 19th, 1989. I know all of you remember it with mixed emotions. I'm sure every one of you here knows exactly what you did on that day. And I remember knowing that the team, that our football team would have actually departed from the AECO, the invite and Forest Reserve to head up to that game in the stadium. I know many of you here would have cried. Anybody here didn't cry on that day? But I think that with David John Williams in charge of the TTFF, we will be able to easily erase those memories as we will again see that and feel that euphoria that we would have felt when we qualified for Germany. So, Mr David John Williams, I want to say to you, congratulations. You have a very tough job ahead of you. Speaking from experience, when you're put in a position like that, there are a lot of battles you will have to fight. You'll face, you're faced with the expectations of everyone around you. Your family will support you. Most of your friends will support you. But you won't know who are the ones that are slightly envious of you and they would be nice and supportive to you upfront, but behind your back, you won't know what they are doing to sabotage you. So that's just a caution there. So you have to be very careful. But whatever you do, don't give up. You will never be able to please everybody. There will always be detractors. They will always find something to say about what you did. No matter what you do, it's never enough. It's not good enough. Somebody will always criticise whatever good deed you do. But don't give up. You have a passion for the sport. You have a vision for where you want to see football in this country. And whatever you do, just keep focused on that vision. Just keep moving ahead. The road is going to be very rough. Sometimes it will be very lonely. But just trust in God, stay focused, stay on course, lean on your father for guidance. From what I've known of him, he is a very astute gentleman. I'm sure he has taught you well. So just most of all, believe in yourself. A lot of us, all of us here, believe in you and we're looking forward to you making a difference in football. All of the young players out there, not just the ones who are currently in the system, the youths under five and six who haven't even started thinking about football yet. What you do today will impact on their future. So as a nation, well, certainly the people in South are behind you 100%. You can always turn to us for support. And as a nation, everyone is looking out for you to right the wrongs of the past decades to ensure that our footballers get treated with the respect and dignity that they deserve. So we are all looking forward to your tenure as president of the Trinidad and Tobago Football Association. And finally, I say a heartfelt congratulations to you. We know you will do well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honourable Minister Nicole Olivier. And I don't know about you, but I was extremely impressed that such a young minister could give such wonderful advice. Let's hear it again for her. She spoke about passion for football and it just amazes me that everyone probably has a football story. In 1989, I can't really see, I can't remember too much, but I do remember, "Eh eh, da 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 da, ooh, lots of beanery area." Well, ladies and gentlemen, I earlier mentioned that the John Williams family is truly dedicated to service to community and by extension, country. Our next speaker has also lived this reality as he is a retired Brigadier General with a garment of knowledge and training in his field. I introduce you to the Member of Parliament for Point Fortin and Minister of National Security, the Honourable Edmund Dillon.
Thank you very much for those wonderful words of introduction. First citizen of Point Fortin, Alderman Clyde Paul, my cabinet colleague and Minister of Energy and Energy Industries, Ms Nicole Olivier, former MP, Mr Hedridge Barrow, Deputy Mayor, Ms General Sinilia, and other councillors. I also recognise my constituency chairman and former mayor, Mr Francis Bullcham. Guest of honour, Mr David John Williams and family, and also my schoolmate, Mr Louis John Williams. But of course, a special mention to the patriarch, Mr John Williams himself, senior. Members of Atlantic, my former employers, my former comrades from Atlantic Energy, Members of Petrotrain, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, a most pleasant good evening to you all. It is a day and honour and a privilege for me to be here this evening to celebrate with David his victory, his nomination as the president of Trinidad and Tobago Football Association. It is said that the Lord smiles when you reward his people for doing something good. And I believe the Lord is smiling today for the position that David has acquired. But I want to also commend the mayor of Point Fortin for the initiative that he has taken in ensuring that this does not go without notice, ensuring that we in the South Western Peninsula recognise the importance of David's presidency. So I think we should give the mayor wonderful applause for that initiative. But today is about David. Today is for us to celebrate his presidency. And success breeds success. I say that against the background that David has done tremendous job with W Connection, bringing it from a position of non-entity to a position that is a force, a team that is recognised throughout Trinidad and Tobago and throughout Kankakaw and throughout the region. So that success, to my mind, breeds success. But I think today, we're in a defining moment. We're defining moment in football in Trinidad and Tobago. Because we have seen football move from different stages, from the days of glory to the days when we are almost looking to see what is next in football in Trinidad and Tobago. And it could not be a different, a better time now to have someone at the helm as David John Williams with his astute leadership that he has demonstrated in moving, as I said, W Connection. I can, almost, I never put my head in a block as a general, as a former military man, never put my head in a block. But I can say quite certainly that David John Williams will do an excellent job in bringing Trinidad and Tobago football at a stage where it ought to be, where it should be, given the talents, given the discipline that we have in Trinidad and Tobago. Because when we look at what's happening today, and I've put on my other hat in terms of the national security environment, there's a big contribution that must be made with respect to harnessing our young people in our society at this point in time. And the reason why we call this sports sporting discipline to a large extent is because of the disciplinary aspect that involves in all sports that we have done. And I've heard stories of David John Williams and the way he did, how he managed W Connection. He is a strong disciplinarian. His success was based on discipline in the teams that he ran. And I'm sure that he'll bring that same kind of discipline to the Football Association, which is required at this point in time in dealing with the young people who participate in the sports. So I simply say that David John Williams is at the right place at the right time. But again, when you look at what Point Fortin and Point Fortin constituency has put out in the public domain, we are seeing, ladies and gentlemen, another son of the soil making it to the top of his game. I draw reference to our former football stars, Billy and these fellows and so on, have done well. But now we have taken it to another level. We now have a president of the Trinidad and Tobago Football Association from the South Western Peninsula, from the Point Fortin constituency, ladies and gentlemen. That deserves a wonderful applause. So David has joined, he's joined what we term the national security framework. At one time, we had the Commissioner of Police from Point Fortin constituency, Mr James Philbrook, the Chief of Defence Staff, Your Goodself, from Point Fortin constituency, Mr Trevor Paul, Point Fortin constituency. And let me put a little plug for my elaborate colleague, Mr John Rosie, from Labrie, the Commissioner of Prisons. And so what we are seeing now is a demonstration of the potential, a demonstration of the capability, a demonstration of what Point Fortin constituency has to offer in the national environment. And so John Williams, David John Williams, would be there to represent this constituency at that high level. And I would throw a pick on at him. And that is, when I was growing up as a candidate, you know, we had some discussions and he said, "Chief, you know what you're getting into?" I said, "I'm not quite sure, but however, I'm certainly going to find out." So I'm going to throw it back at him. "David, you know what you're getting into?" But I'm certain, I'm certain that he'll do an excellent job. And so as we continue to develop sports and so on within this constituency. And I want to tell the mayor that we brought the sports minister here at Point Fortin the very first visit that he made and coming into office was Mahika Oval. And notwithstanding the seven percent cut, Mahika Oval is still on the drawing board as one of the priority development areas for the budget in 2016. And as we continue to develop sports and particular football in the Point Fortin constituency, we'll also see Coronation Park being developed. We'll also see a number of different parks in the areas being developed. They are on the agenda, they are on the project script to treat with. We want to bring back issues, things like the Village Olympics. And so we're going to plug in to our president now to be glad to be supporters of that aspect as we deal with sports, developing sports and culture to some extent in our constituency. Because Point Fortin continues and will re- Because Point Fortin continues and will remain the mecca of sports and culture in Trinidad and Tobago. But as I said, today is a defining moment. And I believe, and I truly believe that we have in David John Williams the kind of leadership that would not only make us proud in Point Fortin, but would make Trinidad Togo proud as we propel football in particular towards the region and towards the hemisphere. So David, all the best. And I know you have the family support. God's willing, and may you enjoy your reign. And if anything that I can do as the MP from Point Fortin, please let me know if you have my instinct and support. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Honourable Minister Edmund Dillon. The mecca of sports and culture. We are not just about oil. And the importance of sports and culture also play a part in security. And you might want to know how is it linked? It's linked simply because if we get people involved in sports, in culture, positive things like that, then they are not going to be so persuaded to do wrong, to get into crime, right? So, some very encouraging words from Minister Dillon. I thank you. And now, we focus on the man of the moment, Mr David John Williams. He started his career in the construction industry in 1979 upon completion of high school at Napremah College, San Fernando. He has spent 36 years in the construction industry in Trinidad and Tobago. He has managed several multimillion dollar projects, both in the private and public sectors, functioning as project director on several civil, structural, and waterfront projects in Trinidad and Tobago. He is currently the Managing Director of John Williams Construction Company Limited, a family-owned civil construction company which was founded during the local construction boom of the 1970s. Mr John Williams is also the President and Chief Executive Officer of W Connection Football Club, which he co-founded with his brother Patrick John Williams in 1999. W Connection has become one of the most successful sporting organisations in the Caribbean region over the past 16 years with an impressive honour roll and expansive international relationships. The W Connection brand is highly recognised throughout the Caribbean region and internationally. He was the leading foundation member of the now TT Pro League and functioned as its first Chairman from 2002 to 2004 and has been its Vice Chairman from 2004 to present. In the wider football industry, he has been appointed by the Confederation of North, Central America and the Caribbean Association Football, Kankakaf, to serve as a member of a task force committee that has been charged with the responsibility to research and develop a Caribbean professional league. Mr John Williams is also a past President of the Napremah College Past Peoples Association and is currently the President of the Trinidad and Tobago Football Association. I now invite his Worship the Mayor to stage to present Mr David John Williams with his award for his achievements.
I will not be long as I fight a test match, although recently, test matches finishes in two days. I will be not as short as a T20 international. So I'll fall somewhere between a T20 and a 50 overs. All protocols observed. Today, I'm indeed humbled by what I see here this evening. Mayor Paul, thank you very much. And not in my wildest dreams a year ago that I saw myself as President of the TTFA. But for some reason, when I reflect on my life, I was prepared for this. I remember as a young man being tense to go into Mahika Oval. And I watched people like Wilfred Bong to score cave playing for Point Forte Civic Centre. And I watched Monty Douglas and his brother Salim Mohammed play. And I remember as a young man in Mahika Oval seeing a short, dark, strong man running down the wing and just stop like that and then take off again, Warren Archibald. And I remember as a young man watching a man stand up in the centre circle with a ball at his feet and you couldn't take it away, Leroy De Leon. So little did I know that I was being prepared for this task. And I went to Point Forte Intermediate RSC just to strewn throw away. And I remember in standard three, a teacher by the name of, I think it was Mr Travelso, something like that, told me a poem, "The height of great men which are kept was not attained by sudden flight, but day while their companions slept were toiling upwards in the night." Little did I know I was being prepared for this job. And in standard five, I had a teacher by the name of Mr Semenat. And I remember being in a group on stage learning down the way where the nights were gay and the sun shined daily on the mountain top. I took a trip on a sailing ship and when I reached Jamaica, I made a stop. Little did I know that they were preparing me for this job. But more than that, why I can stand comfortably to speak to you this evening. I remember in Form One, when I attended Napremah College, we had a public speaking contest. And I was really shattered to speak about it, to face an audience. And my dad, who is 96 years old, told me, "Son, don't worry. Find something in the back of the room and focus on it and you can talk to your audience." Little did I know that he was preparing me for this moment. And I grew up in a family being the last five. And daddy was always the last to eat. And he had four boys and one girl and he would leave back some food. But you know what he did? He served that food in five equal portions. Little did I know that they were preparing me for something like this. And I grew up in a family with old saying, you know? My dad taught me, "Never hang your hat where your hand can reach." And my mum, who is deceased now, used to say, "Friends is carried away, they don't bring you back." You could lead a horse to water, can't make a drink. Little did I know that they were preparing me for the task that I have to take Trinidad and Tobago forward. And Major Dillon spoke about discipline. And I stand before you and the first captain of W Connection came from Point Forte, Mr Renauld Carrington. And of course, Carrington came from Point Forte Civic Centre when he came to W Connection. And we were playing Point Forte Civic Centre in Guara Cara Park. He was our captain. And he got a red card for pressing an airball. In those days, 1999, he was fined $600. That's the discipline we needed in football, but it made him a better man. He went on to become national captain, another man from the southwest peninsula. And I have a strong history with Point Forte Civic. Many of you don't know that I ran for Point Forte Civic Centre Jets. I won two national championship silver medals. Many people would know that I played cricket for Point Forte Civic Centre with the likes of Ned McCree and Lando. Little did I know that Point Forte were preparing me for the task at hand. And I distinctly remember when I look in the audience, former Mayor Bullchun went to Presentation College. In those days, the rival college of Napremah College. And I remember that Mayor Bullchun honouring me at Point Forte College for my achievements at W Connection. May I thank you? So now, we're in the final oval of the 2020 year. I just wanna say thank you. Thanks to my family. Thanks especially to my dad. And when I was running for office, I said maybe it was written in the stars. Because the TTFA was formed on July 22, 1908. I happened to born on July 22, 1962. And maybe it was really written in the stars because the election was held on the 29th of November 2015. That day, my dad turned 96 years old. And I missed that celebration. And generally, I'm a very emotional person. This one was for dad. Point Forte family, thank you very much. It's most appreciated. And I will take this to my grave. I enjoyed it. I'm emotional today. Point Forte, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr David John Williams. I can only describe that as destiny. Certainly just destiny. We are almost at the end of the Christmas season, the end of the year 2015, and certainly the end of our programme this evening. At such times, we must express thanks. On behalf of the Point Fortin Borough Corporation, the Point Fortin Borough Council, I would like to share our deepest gratitude to Worship the Mayor and members of the Point Fortin Council who had the foresight to honour someone not just at the end of tenure, but at the beginning of it. Thank you. To Mr David John Williams for his stewardship in football and for his making a bold step forward. Thank you for accepting to be honoured. And thank you to your family members who would have helped you move, who would have helped mould you into a model citizen and who continue to support you forward. To all those in attendance, I say thank you. It can be challenging to journey from Point Forte into central or north Trinidad. And for some strange reason, it can seem to be twice as tough when it's the other way around. So we are deeply appreciative of your efforts to be here. To the Planning Committee, Mrs Jane Lewis and company, thank you for your commitment to ensuring the smooth feeling of this event.
Today is a very emotional day for me. You could probably hear it in my voice. I'm originally from this part of the island. I still have a home here. Parents still, my dad still live here in this area. I grew up in Point Forte. I went to Point Forte Intermediate RSC. A lot of my sporting activities took place at Mahika Oval. As a little boy, I saw people like Monty Douglas, Wilfred Cave, Leroy De Leon, Warren Archibald, and you know, Brewster Hackett play football. And that left an indelible mark in my life, I would say. So it was really an emotional time for me. I feel honoured. I will take this to my grave. And this evening was very special. Well, today is exactly one month since becoming President of the Association. It has been a difficult month, but it's a month that, you know, I have welcomed because it can only get better. Trinidad football is at the crossroads. Trinidad football has been declined since we qualified for the World Cup 2006. And I think the time is now to arrest that decline. We have a good starting point right now because the team is doing well in the qualifiers. I think we gotta take one game at a time. There will be difficult times. I know that. But I can tell you, I'm going to give it my best shot and ensure that Trinidad and Tobago football commands its rightful place in the region as number one. Well, 2016 obviously is gonna be a busy year for the national senior team. It's also an important year for the national women's team because we have the Olympic qualifiers coming up in February. Of course, we have CFU qualifiers for under 17 and under 20. But of course, the important challenge for us is first of all, the game against Haiti in Panama for the Copa Caribe, which in itself is an important game because if we can win that game, we play the likes of Argentina, Colombia, Chile, you know, Brazil. Those things don't come every day. And after that, we have an appointment with St Vincent, back-to-back games in March and early April for the Olympic qualifiers, the World Cup qualifiers, sorry. And if we can get six points from those games, we could be well on the way to the hex, which is very important, is the last stage of qualifying. So it's gonna be a busy year. I can tell you that the administration which I head will be working fiercely and putting new policies and programmes within the TTFA. We trying as much as possible to make the TTFA as financially viable as possible. We have set ourselves a target to have the financial statements audited and presented to the public no later than the 15th of February. And that will allow us to access some funding from FIFA which has been held up. And that's our immediate priority. And Trinidad and Tobago can look forward to a busy year of football. I just want to say to the public, be patient with us. We can't do everything overnight. And I want to assure Trinidad and Tobago that I'm committed to the task that has been handed to me. And I want them to continue to support the national senior team in its quest for qualification for 2080 Russia. And that football in Trinidad and Tobago can be something that we can all hold on to and be proud of. And that football in Trinidad-Bago can be something that we can all hold on to and be proud of. No problem.